Matt.
We're ready.
Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. We are meeting a little earlier than our town meeting this evening for organizational meeting as required by our charter. So tonight, the only thing we're going to get ready to do is we're going to pick a mayor pro tem. We will have our work session next Monday on the 19th at 5:00 and that's when we will go through all the committees and pick the chairs. In the meantime, and the liaison. So in the meantime, whoever is chair or liaison to a particular committee will continue on as is until we meet next Monday. So tonight, the only thing we really need to do is to pick a mayor pro tem. So Darren, you have been mayor pro tem, I believe, for the last three years. Is that correct? Sound about right?
Sounds about right.
Okay, and you, Connor, you filled in wonderfully last week for the first time, I believe.
It involves a very occasional check writing, and I would just like to say that I'm happy to pass that along to the next occasional check writer signer. So if, you know, my proposal, since I've been doing it, you know, I think we ought to move everybody up through and I would propose that Connor serve as mayor for him.
Okay.
Just because I've written a lot of checks recently?
Not for the town. Let's be clear, not for the town. And, and I think the mayor pro tem is like third in line for check writing. So because Matt is around, I'm around. So you're really, Matt and I are off the.
It's something that in three years, I've managed to not feel the need to include on my LinkedIn bio.
Okay, that's, that's a good thing. So, well, first of all, Connor, would you be willing to serve as mayor pro tem?
Sure, happily.
Okay, and then the council, are we, are you in agreement that you would see Connor?
I am in it. I have no problem with that. I was just thinking, what happens if we said no? I was like, I want to nominate Bridget. And then what happens? We just like debate it? That'd be pretty funny.
I think the charter says there's a wrestling match.
Fifteen minute meeting becomes forty five minutes.
I'll take Bridget in that one. Yeah. I'm supportive of that.
Okay. Bridget, are you supportive of Connor?
I, I am supportive and I decline Nate's nomination. Thank you very much.
I know. Are you getting baby slippers? I see with, look like yarn.
They're headphones.
Oh, okay.
You don't know me at all.
Maybe they're baby headphones.
I have an Apple.
I know, right? Okay, so I believe that is the necessary, our business for this meeting. So again, we will be meeting next Monday at 5:00 on the 19th. Council, this, we are having a light meal served. So don't feel like that you have to come hungry and for the council. And of course, these meetings aren't open to the public and this is an in-person meeting. So we will be meeting on the first floor in the conference room next Monday. Okay, and there will be an agenda that will be circulated next week. I did send out a draft agenda. Did anybody have any additions or wanted to make any changes to the wording that I put on there? Because that's what we'll be following. You don't need to tell me now. You can tell, you can tell Matt or me later if you didn't get a chance to cruise through that. I just want to make sure we have everything covered.
Can I just, I'm sorry, back up a moment?
Sure.
I know it's unanimous, but do we need to formally elect Connor as a council to mayor pro tem? Or do we feel like we've done that enough by it being unanimous?
I don't remember in the organizational meetings being that, doing that, but Matt. I think the.
I mean, the code, the charter says mayor, the council shall elect a president pro tem of the council for a month.
Okay, well, why don't, then let's do, why don't you go ahead and nominate?
I'll nominate Connor.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're not going to vote for yourself, Con?
Yeah, now it's a little awkward.
I'm not sure. Yes, I will vote myself. I was not sure if you need to abstain.
No, I don't think you do. Okay. All right. So now we've covered that.
Great.
Sorry.
So if you have any additions, we'll send out the draft agenda again to, to everyone. So probably, what do you think, Matt, next Thursday? Okay, so if you have a chance though, to look at it before then, what I sent out earlier, just go ahead and let Matt know and we can go ahead and update, start updating it. So. Okay, um, so we have about six minutes, so we can all take six minutes and then we'll come back at 7:00 PM. Sound good?
Yep.
Okay, for those who are on the call, you may just stay with your camera off and then we'll pick back up at 7:00 PM.
Hey, Boobendra.
Hello, sir.
Good. We, we finished the organizational meeting just a few minutes early. So we're kind of on a break until seven. So we're going to start everything back up at 7:00. So.
Yes, sir. So I should wait here?
Yeah, you can wait. You can just hang out for a few minutes if you want to take your video off and maybe get a drink of water or something. We'll be back right at 7:00. So.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're just waiting for Bridget and Nate to come back and then we can get started. Okay, Bridget, you're on mute.
I know, I went out. I said I never left you.
Oh, you've never, well.
I've been here.
Okay, Matt, are you ready? Albert, Albert is in for Melissa tonight. So he's recording the meeting.
All right, Albert, we're ready when you are.
Good to go.
All right, so we're going to call the meeting to order. This is the July 12 meeting for the town of Kensington. And we will start with a moment of silence. I know I want to keep Julie O'Malley and everyone's thoughts and as she still continues with some health issues. And so please keep her in your thoughts and prayers. Is there anyone else that we'd like to bring up this evening to think of? Nope. Okay, if we could just have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Council, those were distributed to you this morning. I know a couple of edits were made. Is there any other? Edits or can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from the June 14, 2021 Kensington Town Council meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have a special guest this evening and I see that Evan has logged on. Just to say a couple of words about our council member at large, Evan Glass. Evan was elected in 2018 and he serves on the Transportation and the Environment Committee and the Health and Human Services Committee where he is the council's point person for homelessness and vulnerable communities. Councilmember Glass also serves as the Montgomery County Council's representative on the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, National Capital Region Transportation Planning Board, and the National Association of Counties Transportation's Committee and its Large Urban County Caucus. Councilmember Glass is the first LGBTQ member of the Montgomery County Council. During his first term on the council, Councilmember Glass successfully passed the Montgomery County Pay Equity Act and the LGBTQ, LGBTQ Bill of Rights and the Oversight and Small Business Investment Act. He spearheaded the efforts to expand food composting, make public buses free for all residents under the age of 18, and amend the county's charter to add two new council districts. Prior to joining the council, Councilmember Glass was a CNN journalist and served as the executive director of the Gandhi Brigade Youth Media and Innovation Innovative Youth Serving After School Program. Councilmember Glass lives in Silver Spring with his husband Jason and their two rescue Beagles Percy and Daisy, who I've personally met and enjoyed very much. Evan attended our dog parade, I guess, about two years ago. So it was wonderful meeting them and Evan, of course. So welcome, Councilmember Glass.
We got to get the Beagle Gang back together.
I know, right?
I know. Well, it's, it's, I appreciate that introduction. I appreciate the invitation to be with all of you this evening. Thank you. I, I hope and wish to see you in person. I know that according to social media, you've been doing, the town's been doing more things in person. So I look to, look forward to coming back out maybe in the fall, doing some things, whether it's a dog parade or some other event. I actually think the last time I saw some of you all was about a year ago, when we had the Black Lives Matter March that culminated outside the town council, outside the building. And so that might have been the last time I saw some of you all, and that was a particularly moving event. Some of the speakers and youth that were there. And a lot has changed in the last year since then. And so, you know, there are, I have a list of a few things that I can tick through and then we can open this up, really, if you want, to a conversation. I don't know how long you have on your agenda for us to, to talk.
Well, I was planning on about 30 minutes, if that works for you.
That's perfect.
I'm sure you have many things to do. I don't want to, if people have a lot of questions, we can certainly go past the 30 if necessary, but a lot of the committees that you serve on are of great interest to us. And so we're hoping that you just touch base on.
Perfect. And, and it is that committee work and my work serving on the Transportation Planning Board, which has received heightened interest in the DC region. It used to be a sleepy technocratic board talking about regional planning and you drop a little 270 and 495 expansion on there and everybody knows who we are. But it was that work and my service on the, on, on that board that I wrote a letter on your behalf gladly to support some of the work that you are all doing. And so I think about $55,000, if I recall, has been allocated to the town so that you can do some study improvements along Connecticut Avenue. And I believe that grant is really going to help with some multimodal problem solving to help, to help make our dependence on cars a little less so, and to make those who are walking or biking or scootering a little more safe too. And, and the reason I was glad to do that and write that letter and do other things I've been doing is because Vision Zero and pedestrian safety is one of the most important things to me. I've been holding a number of seminars and town halls, more appropriately, over the last three years. And just so that we, to have a better understanding of Vision Zero and the pedestrian incidents and the deaths that have occurred, I'll share with you that thus far in the year 2021, we have already had 159 serious collisions and five deaths on our streets here in Montgomery County. And so while we have made some progress, there is a lot more work that we have to do. And I'm working with my colleagues, with regional stakeholders and with the county executives team to implement more pedestrian safety measures as well. And I know that there are a number of street and road issues in the town of Kensington or roads that feed into the town, particularly, I know, Capital View and St. Paul. There have been some issues raised that I'm aware of and I'm going to communicate with the Maryland State Highway Administration to talk about that particular crossing. But I know that we need to make Capital View safer corridor as more and more people will be driving up there or traveling up there, especially with more development that's taking place along that road, fully aware of that. And also, the state highway is also, this might be news for some of you, is studying a potential road diet for bike lanes, similar to the one that we just introduced on University Boulevard. And I know I've been in correspondence with, with some of you about that as well. And so you will have likely noticed the road diet going from essentially Georgia Avenue over to Northwood High School. And it's been getting a lot of positive feedback. Clearly, some people are, don't understand or don't quite know what has happened to the road, according to some listservs and next door postings, but we're trying to educate people about why we've done it and trying to make that road safer for everybody. And then shifting from, from transportation, I'll just give you also a brief update about Woodward High School. I'm sure that you all are following it, but basically the construction is still ongoing and really nothing has changed in respects to the timeline that it is still being scheduled to open in September of 2025, at which time, at which time I believe it will be the feeder school. Well, that'll be for, for, I presume, your area or at least an area near you before then, it will be for Northwood High School, the second time I'm referencing Northwood High School, which happens to be my home school. And so looking forward to the completion and construction of Woodward when that fully opens. And then the last thing that I will mention is I know that crime and public safety have been on a number of people's minds and I am receiving more and more correspondence about that. And so, you know, preemptively, any questions that might be asked, I'll share with you that I just reached out to MCPD today just to get an update in, in advance of this conversation. And car thefts, probably no, no surprise to you in the listservs, car thefts continue to be the most common incident here in Montgomery County and that there have been various types of reports about cars being broken into, some by force, but the truth is, a lot of them are being simply opened because they're left unlocked. And not to minimize that at all, but it is a reminder that you should tell your residents, you know, we do live in a relatively safe community, but just lock your doors when you pull up to either your driveway or, or park on the street. There's also a map that I'll share with you or share with you the information that MCPD has an interactive map where you can see crime in your area. And so I'd encourage you to go to the website if you want to see that. And last thing I'll say is that in Kensington itself, from, from May through July, so the last two, two and a half months or so, there have been three cases of reported commercial burglary and two reported cases of residential burglary. And then finally, one reported case of aggravated assault. And so while, again, we don't, we don't like any, any bad incidents or any crime taking place in our community, that is the aggregate of what has taken place in the town over the last two and a half months or so. So if you see something, please say something, contact MCPD. And with that, I will stop talking so that we can talk for about 20 minutes or so and whatever you'd like.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. I know on the crime that is a big issue with people and we have worked really hard to educate people that even though you feel safe to lock your cars and it's not Kensington, this is Montgomery County wide. So.
And I plead guilty to that too, sometimes forgetting. So, yeah.
Yeah, so it really is something that people need to remember. So, council, before we open it up to, to the, our audience today, would you have a specific question you want to or a topic that you would like to address to Evan? Don't all jump at once.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll come in real quick. So Councilmember Glass, thank you, Nate Engel, and you've been, you and your staff are very supportive, as you mentioned, in writing the letter for the TLC grant. So I just wanted to thank you personally again for, for that. I think it went a long way, especially given where you sit on the Transportation Planning Board. So thank you again. Just wanted to give you a quick update on that, which is that we are about to embark on the selection for the firm who will be doing the study. And we really want to make it very participatory and involve people from the surrounding communities, but also residents, obviously, but then also folks like yourself and your staff to make sure that we're getting input. And I just would request, kindly request that you're, you stay involved with that process as we do implement the grant, because I think it really requires a lot of input for what we vision that section to be. So just wanted to put that out there. And one other request and maybe the question that I have is related to the bicycling pedestrian priority designation that you can get. We have one already from the county's perspective, but we did apply for the state level designation for priority area. And in that process, we learned that in order to have any designated capital improvements projects or that from the county's perspective, we need to start advocating for that. So I envision that it's something coming out of this, this Connecticut Avenue study may end up identifying infrastructure or solutions that we might need to advocate for at the county level. So just, you know, if you have any insights for when to start that process and or any support you could give, we'd be greatly appreciative. Thank you.
I appreciate your, your interest and your leadership in the multimodal transportation and the bicycle lanes and, and asking for the support for the grant. So, so thank you for that. And with, with regard to the designation, if it's something that I need to reach out to your District 18 delegation, I'm happy to do that. Let's maybe figure out what those mechanics are and what needs to take place. But I don't anticipate there would be any, any political obstacles. We just got to break through the bureaucracy to figure out what, what paperwork needs to be filed and where. But I'm absolutely happy to help lead that charge.
Thanks. Yeah, and the District 18 delegation has been very supportive for that state designation request. So we'll keep you, we'll keep you, obviously, you and your staff posted and just, you know, and any updates what we'll provide if there's any support that might be needed. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Okay, Connor, I think you were going to have a question.
Yeah. First, thanks for coming tonight, Councilmember Glass. I wanted to pick your brain for a moment on the Thrive 2050 document. As you recall, I testified on behalf of the town in front of your council just a week or so ago. And really, Thrive 2050, much of what is in there, the town is highly supportive of. But it's, you know, we've got concerns. I'd like to just hear your, you know, thoughts on, on the document as, as you see it today. Some of our concerns are really what's been left out from earlier drafts. Some of our concerns are really what's been left out from earlier drafts. And largely, a lot of it has to do with what was at one time missing middle housing. Now it's kind of evolved into attainable housing, but this concept of introducing duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, or multi occupancy buildings into the residential area, which, again, we're not necessarily against that. I grew up in a neighborhood in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, where this was all over the place. And the joke is that it took me until I was ten years old to realize that the house across the street from me was a duplex. I really did not know that that it had two families living in it because the same height, you know, what we call now setbacks and lack coverage, all of those conformity things were there. And that was in the initial draft, right? As they took Daniel Perelix's comments on missing middle housing, the initial drafts from the planning staff talked to those concepts that, hey, we want to introduce additional styles of housing diversification into the residential zone, which we are supportive of. But we'd like to see stronger language that that brings back some of the conformity. And I'm just, you know, I'd like to to hear from you kind of where you're at and your thoughts on Thrive 2050.
So I appreciate your testimony and and the engagement and your your personal history, right, with mixed housing communities. So I think what's important to do is take a step back and recognize what thrive is and what it is not. Thrive is a visionary document. And the county and governments, local governments, municipalities all across the country do these visionary documents, strategic plans, if you will, every, every few decades. Washington DC just approved theirs earlier this year, I believe. And they're nothing more than visionary documents. And the last time the Montgomery County did one of these, it envisioned an agricultural reserve. It envisioned urban cores in areas where they hadn't existed. And it took decades to make these things a reality. What thrive does not do is the document itself does not create any zoning changes. And I think that is a really important thing. Because the passage of a general plan, which is what this is, and something has to pass. I'm not saying as it's written will pass, but a visionary document needs to be approved to help guide the the planning department essentially over the next number of years and decades. And so what what will then come of that are zoning text amendments. And when we do master plans and minor plans and sector plans, once we do all of those things, it will incorporate the concepts of the general plan. But each of those different plans and zoning amendments will be subject to a very tightly defined area. And they will all be up for debate, discussion, and the legislative process, each on their own, essentially. And so as we engage in this, whatever does pass will not be the end all be all. It will actually be the very beginning of a conversation and there will be no change, at least in zoning and housing type, that will come from the document itself. Does that help answer some of your questions? And let me, as I'm saying that, the other question about the attainable housing and the missing middle. So I'm not in the planning department, but I read a lot of documents and I read, you know, white papers and certain blogs from across the country. And I know that there is a debate as to what to call housing that people need. And originally, someone, not me, not any of us on this Zoom, called it missing middle. And at some point in time, that morphed into attainable housing. And I think what's important to keep in mind is that all we have to do is look around our community. And we know people our own age, but especially our children. And for certain, we know our grandchildren are going to be priced out of the communities where they grew up or the communities where they might wish to live. And so call it what you may, but the reality is we want to find a way for people to live in the community where they grew up or where they want to move to, where our future workforce is. And I think sometimes we get caught up in debates about what is affordable. And by government standards, by the county's standards, affordable essentially means you make less than, you know, sixty percent or fifty percent of the area median income in the Washington DC region. And the area median income, the AMI in the DC region, is approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we're talking about families that make less than fifty or sixty thousand dollars. And yes, we need housing for them, but what about dual income family with two kids who maybe make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars? They're priced out of a lot of Montgomery County as well. And so we need to figure out how to be able to accommodate even middle class, and that's what I would classify it as, middle class housing. We need all of the above, but I I try not to get caught up in what we call it. But for me, it's called affordable housing at all different levels, and that's what we're just trying to achieve. And so again, I'll finish and await any follow up you might have by simply saying that thrive is a conceptual document to try to figure out how we can create more housing for more people, because that's what our community is demanding.
So if I can have one other follow, just because you've done a lot of work around homelessness and the, you know, underserved populations and housing. And this is the part that has been, you know, difficult to understand is how does a county achieve more truly affordable, deeply affordable housing when the land in the county is just so expensive that unless there's government intervention, right? There's some sort of government subsidy. How do we actually achieve more affordable, capital A affordable housing in this county?
So it is a multi-pronged approach. At the most affordable, the deeply affordable level that you just referred to, the only way we make those that housing affordable is with government subsidy. Either the government builds the building and owns the building, which we don't do here in Montgomery County. But what we do is we provide deep subsidies with the state and sometimes federal partners to nonprofit organizations. And before becoming, joining the council, I was vice president of Montgomery Housing Partnership, which is the county's largest nonprofit developer of affordable housing. That takes a lot of money. So we only have, I think we have about seventy million dollars that we have in this budget, sixty to seventy million that goes towards affordable housing across the board. That also includes rental subsidies. I think that we need to look at other models that are done in, you know, around the world, quite frankly. There are models out of Vienna and other parts of Europe where the government will own the land. And instead of turning it over to a developer for private or nonprofit, if we owned the land and just erected housing on top of it in this area, that's half the cost of the housing. Because you're not conveying the land, but you're entering into some long term lease. The other way, and that is a government, right? That is a big G government way of providing affordable housing by using government land and using government resources, AKA taxpayer dollars. The other way to do it, which is a more free market system, is supply and demand. And we have not built enough housing to keep up with the demand because we're not building walls around Montgomery County. We're not setting any, any other policies to mitigate who can be here. And so by simple economic theory, the more housing that we build, the lower it will drive the prices down, or at least the least, or at least it will not allow the rates to increase as fast as they are in other parts where they have parts of the country where they're not building any housing. So so I've just gone from a big government idea to a total free market capitalist idea. And I quite frankly, think it's an all of the above approach that we need to take. I hope that answers a little bit more. Happy to grab a beer some other time and talk more about.
Yeah. No, these are huge and deep issues and I, I think your answer was great. I mean, we could spend an hour just on this one question. So I really, I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
I just to tag on a little bit, I know there's some concern about the the modern price dwelling units, particularly as they want to get people into ownership and the condo fees are not included in that discount. So the the cost for, yes, you may get a deal on the apartment itself, but you have to pay a hundred percent of the fees. Is there any thinking on how to to lower those for people that are on lower ceiling?
Yes. So there was actually a hearing that was scheduled today about the MPDU program and got postponed. But this is a conversation that comes up quite frequently. There was actually a building in Bethesda a number of years ago that was built. And because they were mandated to put affordable housing units in there and because they were going to be slightly different by nature and because the condo fees were going to be a little different, they actually built a second entrance for those affordable housing units. I'll leave that there. Once, once we learned, the county learned, and this predates me by a year or so, but I was, I was in it. Once the county learned, we changed the law to say you can't do that. You can't create a second entrance for those who have the affordable housing units within a condo. But that gets to the tricky nature of this, that you still might have an affordable unit, but the condo fees are still going to be market rate because you still have the amenities that one needs. And it is something that we have to work through. I absolutely agree with you.
Okay. Darren, I saw you were going to ask a question.
Yeah, I just was going to go back and sort of test a little bit of your comments about how the Thrive 2050 is simply a conceptual document. I see the 2012 Kensington Sector Plan and its accompanying design guidelines as somewhat conceptual as well. And yet they very much set the table for future development plans in Kensington. And so when you have a concrete plan, it goes before the planning board. The question is, is it consistent with the sector plan and the design guidelines? And I think a lot of the reason that the boundary analysis for MCPS generated so much angst was that despite countless promises that it was not going to lead to redistricting anybody, there's a concern that it sets the table for the future conversations and the future approvals. And so when we look at Thrive 2015, I think it's important that we get it right because I don't think it's a meaningless document because if it were, there'd be no reason to do it. Instead, we ought to be looking at it because it's set concepts that are supportable. And one of the things in Kensington that has caused a lot of concern with our residents and me personally is sort of a almost thoughtless tossing of mark into mass transit. I get that ridership on metro, you know, historically, pre pandemic, was substantial. I understand that the projections on purple line are substantial. But in Kensington, the one stop that we have for the mark line is gets about two hundred people per day. And if you, if you're going to use that as a metric, you might as well lump all the bus stops, you know, because a lot, there are bus stops in Montgomery County, Ride On or Lamada, that have two hundred people per day. So if the concept of Thrive 2015, 2050 rather, is to focus denser development around mass transit, let's make sure that they are legitimately mass transit and not just looking like it. Because mark is not. And if it, I don't think it should be included in a conceptual plan, even though, you know, there's no actual rezoning being done. I think that we might consider having a metric where it has to be bidirectional service, has to have weekend service before it's possibly considered mass transit. I don't know if that, if you've had time to think.
So I think I'll say that I agree with nearly everything that you say, right? That at this moment, by by a certain definition, at least by comparative standards to a metro station, the Kensington Mark Station is not, you know, would not be classified as as the same type of transportation system just by the sheer numbers alone. But as we think and plan for the future and the growth that we have to accommodate, every community grows or dies, and that is a baseline, you know, in civilization. And so as we attract more people because of our, 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 our living and our jobs and the federal workforce, the government jobs that are right down the road or FDA and NIH right down our roads, we have to figure out what is the best way to accommodate that growth. And there is a school of thought that we can, you know, there are people clamoring to get rid of the agricultural reserve, nearly one third of the county, and saying, you know what, let's just get rid of it. It's not really, they'll say, you know, the farmland isn't what it could be potentially. And they advocate for another use, AKA housing. There is no, there are no roads out there, right? And it's all just farmland, essentially. Or we could recognize the infrastructure that already exists and try to better utilize it. You know, so Connor talked about being from Milwaukee and seeing duplexes right across the street, not knowing, not recognizing what they were. I am from Long Island and I'm used to taking the Long Island Railroad all the time and taking that into New York City, and that's commuter rail. And it's, it's recognizing the communities that can exist around existing infrastructure. And I'm not saying that in this visualize process, it transforms Kensington. But I think from my perspective, and I know from, from state legislators' perspectives who are advocating for more use of that mark and have advocated for more better funding to make it weekend service as well and all daytime service, there is potential in that station and there's potential in the Germantown station and up and down the lines that we have. And it's over the course of this visualize 2050, better utilizing that infrastructure and helping it become what it can be. Because the alternatives, again, are either not accommodating growth, driving up all of our home prices, possibly, you know, expanding sprawl further out into the northern part of the county, into Frederick County. And then there are other ideas as well. And so I think that's the balance that we have to, to, to try and grapple with. And so last thing I'll say again is that the the sector plans that you reference, they are starting documents and it doesn't dictate that everything happens, but allows for it to happen. And they don't, most of the time, sector plans don't get built out in their entirety during the life of that sector plan. They might get along the way, you know, a lot of it might, might become reality. But but those are all individual decisions as well, and I will keep coming back to that point that whatever visualize 2050 is approved or approved within 2050, we have to come back to all of these different plans, master plans and sector plans, and discuss the specifics within each of them.
Sure. And I appreciate that, that additional explanation. I guess my hope is that the conceptual document itself won't simply define mass transit to be mark, purple line and metro, but will maybe be a little more conceptual to say mass transit that, for example, provides weekend service and bidirectional service. So that if those changes come, then that would trigger allowing the sort of denser development near the newly, you know, mass transit. But if it doesn't, because I mean, I'm sure you know the challenges that mark faces in trying to negotiate increased use of CSX lines. I mean, they're, we find PECO impenetrable, we find CSX impenetrable squared. And so I just, I worry that, that, that if you don't put that into the concept document itself, you'll have increased density in an area that doesn't have truly mass transit.
I, I understand that. And I'll just, I'll, I'll share this data point with you. So a year and a half, two years ago, I led the effort to expand our bus service so that every child under the age of eighteen got free bus service. Six months after, we held a hearing to see how that program was going. In the six months after we made buses free for kids under eighteen, any time of the week, any time of day, ridership increased fifty two percent, right? And so sometimes we have to change the environment to allow the full potential of our systems. And whether or not we dictate in thrive what mass transit is or what suitable mark usage is, at some point, we need to expand the mark service. We need to make it weekend service. We need to make it all day service. I say yes to all of that. I think we'd agree. And we just have to. I say yes to all of that. I think we'd agree, and we just have to figure out how to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick one on the transportation, because you brought up the buses. I know ridership right now is free on Ride On, I think through September. Is that correct?
That is correct. If it's not September 1st, I think it's October 1st. It's one of, one, it's the beginning of one of those two months. Yes.
Is that likely to get expanded again, or you think that's?
I, I would love it to be expanded. I think our bus service should be free all the time for everybody. I don't think that's going to happen. I asked the Department of Transportation during this current budget, FY22 budget conversations about it. And it came with about a $22 million fiscal note, which is a little too high even in our $6 billion budget. But when, the reason that it got extended was because when we were in the middle of the budget negotiations, we were still in the middle of COVID. And we wanted to make sure that everybody could still take the bus to get to the Germantown Mass Vaccination Site or the Wheaton Library, right, to get where they needed to go. And quite frankly, also recognizing that while metro ridership has been down, bus ridership did not decrease as much. And that is regionally and I think nationally, because more people who are dependent on transit rely solely on the bus to get to work. And many of those individuals were frontline workers who had to get to the stores, who had to get to the hospitals and how to keep working. And so anything that we can do to continue supporting them, I'm all for. But I, I think, I think, I think the free buses will sunset.
Okay, that's, okay. I, I have a daughter with a disability who does not drive and, and she relies on the bus. And so it has been really nice for her not to have to, for what little she makes, have to do ridership. But it, it's not that expensive. But I, I do appreciate the fact that they've made it free for as long as they have. So I, I do appreciate.
Well, yeah, as, as, as long as I'm, I'm in Rockville, I will continue advocating for more transit equity. So let's continue that conversation.
Very good. Um, Council, do you have any other questions before I open it up to the public? Any hands? Does anyone in the audience wish to ask Councilmember Glass a question? Just raise your hand or pop up on screen.
I did. I popped it up on screen. I am scheduled to speak later on a sign variance. May I make a comment to Councilman Glass at this time?
Of course.
Thank you. My name is Bupendra Prakash. I'm an engineer, scheduled to speak later. I am seeing more and more, and this is more commentary for your, for this esteemed audience to think about it. I believe families now making 200,000 are not affording the very homes that we used to afford as Americans. And I believe this is due to too much foreign investment into the American residential landscape. Too much money chasing these properties. Big companies all over the world and oligarchs all over the world are sending their monies here because we have the best real estate laws protecting investment in real estate. And so much money is coming that the price of the homes are going up because it's easy to borrow. And I wonder when Mr. Glass says that you have to change the environment, and I quote, "to dictate the improvement." Mr. Glass, I say at the governmental level, before every house is sold, at the state level at least, we need to ascertain where that money came from to be lent. Long ago, when Mr. Crimmins was buying homes to his parents and so forth, those homes were financed by the local bank that held our local savings. Now these homes are being financed by banks we don't know of that are holding this excess money is from the big aggregators of money. And they're pricing us out of our own cities, which is an un-American deal. And that's all I would like to say.
So I, I appreciate the comment. I, you know, you, you raised an interesting point. I'm now interested in knowing, you know, how many of the 400, nearly 400,000 housing units we have here in Montgomery County, how many of them are, are owned by entities outside the United States? I, that's an interesting question. I'm not sure that isn't, there's a solution that the Montgomery County Council can tackle, right? I'm not even sure the Maryland General Assembly can tackle that. You know, I, I mentioned growing up on Long Island. I remember the 1980s when there was concern about foreigners buying real estate in New York City. And at the time, it was people worried about Japanese business members. And, and I don't think anything became of it. But, but, you know, here in Montgomery County, another interesting data point, one third of our residents were not born in the United States. So I, you know, a wrinkle to your comment is how would one classify foreign investment? If one third of our residents here were not born in the United States, right? And so I also think that a way to create more affordable housing is to build more housing. And what that looks like is up for public debate, as we've been talking about this evening. And it will continue to be up for debate in the communities as we discuss zoning in those areas. But, but I appreciate your perspective. It's one I hadn't thought of and it's made me a little more curious.
Last point, if you cannot address this matter in your own chambers, you're, you're entitled to reach out to the higher governmental authorities. Look where the money is coming from. A, a quick side point. These toll roads are $35 to go to DC from Fairfax, only because it's foreign money building the toll roads.
There is currently public testimony being accepted for the, the price of tolls on 495 and 270. And so the proposal by Governor Hogan to build toll roads on the Beltway in 270 is the same toll company that built those toll roads you mentioned in Fairfax and in Loudoun County. And it is an Australian company. And so if you have thoughts about that, I encourage you to submit your testimony to, I'm not sure if it's the Maryland Department of Transportation, but, but public, or just follow up with me. I'll put my email in the chat box and I'll direct you to a place where you can send that.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Okay, um, Joe Campbell, you put something in the chat that you had a question.
Right. Thank you, Mayor Furman, and thank you, Mr. Glass, for joining us tonight. Just a very quick comment. I think that Councilmember Bartram's observations about conceptual documents do bear underscoring. I think he's absolutely right, that they can and do take on lives of their own, these conceptual documents. And so I think we should be very cautious about what, what they include. And, and he's also right by saying that the Kensington Sector Plan was one, is one of those documents. It's an exhibit in terms of how these can take lives of their own. I also agree that it would be rather foolish to treat the Kensington Mark Station as if it were akin to a metro station for purposes of enhancing the housing mix in, in Montgomery County. I just don't think that this is a, an accurate or even comparable comparison. So I, I really hope that that would be given an awful lot of thought. I know you, you've mentioned just a moment ago how you hope that the mark stations in the mark transit unit can be expanded and become a little more versatile. But there are real obstacles to, to accomplishing that. And I think that designating the Kensington Mark Station or any mark station as akin to a metro station would be a bit foolish. Thank you.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Campbell. And, and I, I do agree that not all transit, not all transit usage is the same, right? A, a metro station is not the same as a bus stop, which is not the same as a mark station. And so they need to be looked at through those lenses. But in my opinion, transit stations are preferable over road expansion, right? Or new road creation, which just further encourages sprawl, greenhouse gas emission. And then the other things that come with it, including sewer pipe utilities. And so those are just the trade-offs that we just need to think about. But, but I think you're absolutely right, coming back to the point that a mark station is not a metro station. But my, but I still think it's preferable to some of the other alternatives.
Could be. I mean, I, I don't know. I, I don't know if there's a, a real heavy road expansion envisioned in, in the Thrive 2050 document. I'd rather doubt it, but again, I just am cautious about such a comparison, which seems a bit apples to oranges. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Furman.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. And does anybody else have any quick questions? I know we've gone a little bit over the time. We had asked Councilmember Glass to be with us. But I'm not seeing any hands and I'm not seeing anything in the chat. So Evan, thank you so much for taking the time out of your day to come and visit us. We, we do have a Labor Day event, so I hope if you're around.
I was gonna ask, is, is, is the parade returning?
We, we're not doing the parade this year. We were concerned, A, we've got a late start. And B, that so many groups have not met in a year and a half, would they be ready to jump in? Of course, next year is an election year, so we figured we'd have plenty of people wanting to participate in a parade next year. So, but we are having a festival on Labor Day. And of course, we have the Paint the Town event here at Town Hall, so we will have some activities going.
Fantastic. I'm going to jot it down in my calendar right now. And if, if I don't see you in between now and then, I'll see you then. But please do reach out to me. Thank you for your engagement in all of these issues. And as we continue working towards, you know, safer roads and then more livable communities, right, where we can all be safe, we can all afford, and we can, you know, retire as well and age in place. And so ultimately, that's what it's all about. So let's continue these conversations. My email is there. And thank you all for everything that you do.
Great. Thank you so much, Evan.
Cheers.
Take care. Bye bye. Okay, Council, thank you. That was great having, we can continue to reach out to some of our council members if we finding this helpful. I know Gabe is around the corner, Gabe Albernus. So he might be a, a good one to, to ask for a future meeting as well. All right, so let's go down, back to the mayor and the town council. Number two is the 10616 Connecticut Avenue Sign Variance. So Matt, do you want to just speak to this real quick?
Sure. Council, before you this evening is a sign variance request for 10616 Connecticut Avenue, which is the Kensington Valero Gas Station. Bupendra and Yaga is on the call as well, at least he was. I see him. They will be representing Valero. You received, within your council packets, their statement of justification for the variance along with a staff memo and the original building permit for the monument sign. Ms. Bupender, if you want to proceed. You're on mute.
My name is Bupendra Prakash. I am an engineer representing Capital Petroleum on this variance request with my colleague Yagya, who has helped prepare these documents. Let's see, this sign that replaced the old Kensington gas sign, price signs only, is three feet higher than what it was before. And of course, three feet higher than what was permitted. We regret coming back to you after the permit. We have to state why we now request the nine feet. What we should say is that the sign is not higher to give it more square footage. In fact, we are right on the money, so to speak, with the allowable square footage. But of the nine feet, which three feet exceeds the six foot maximum, those three feet are at the bottom of the sign. They're not at the top of the sign, I would say. In fact, there is no signage in that three feet from the ground, the first three feet from the ground. Why that is so, we would plead that different from other stores, a gas station has to identify, in addition to its, its brand name, the price sign. The southbound, the northbound traffic cannot see the gas station due to that bridge. And on the left, and the various landscaping that hides the facility completely. In fact, one cannot actually see the sign as it was before to make a left turn, given the adequate weaving that you need to enter the store. As you know, gasoline is an not, is an impulsive type of purchase. It is not something, somebody goes out wanting to buy, they look at their meter, they change lanes, they go to their favorite brand. For those who are picky about their fuel. So this store on the northbound traffic customers, this sign is hardly visible. And only when you get to the turn do you actually see the price. That is the decision point to decide whether you go and you make a purchase. So in our pictures that you will see, the northbound traffic can see the sign only after you cross the bridge where the price is visible. The southbound traffic in Kensington, it represents a dip in, in the elevation by about three feet. So correspondingly, we are asking you to consider allowing us to essentially have six feet of signage, but three feet elevated off the ground. And that is all I have to say for your consideration.
Council, any questions for the?
I, I have a few, just looking through the paperwork. The original sign permit application also has with it the conceptual drawings or diagrams that you all submitted to county on exactly how this sign would be constructed. And in there, it demonstrates a six-foot-tall sign at grade level that is six feet wide, which would be within our square footage allocation, because it's only 36 square feet. But you demonstrate in both a computer, you know, in two different spots on this application that you were going to be installing this and requesting a permit for, for a conforming sign that would be no higher than six feet from grade. That's what you were approved for, but that is not what you install. Can you help me understand what happened from when you applied asking for a sign that would be no taller than six feet and at grade level to what is there now?
Yes. It does look, for want of a better word, it does look fishy. We, we are the engineers. We applied for the sign and we are obligated to apply for a sign based on the allowable ordinance. Between the owner and the contractor, they made decisions that we were not consulted on. I cannot verify that they made this decision. How it became nine feet is certainly a question that is subject to investigation. But after the fact, the owner of the facility, not the contractor, you see, we are engineers. Then you give the permit that we got from your departments. We give it to the owner. The owner gives it to the contractor. And what comes back is this three-foot discrepancy or excess that is in there. So now we are coming back retroactively, asking you to allow that excess. Why was it made? It is made to improve visibility. They did not order it wrong. They made that decision. How it's made?
Improve the visibility of what?
Of the price and the ID.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. So then that leads me to my question of if the intent is to improve the visibility of price, why did you put the price at the bottom of your sign?
That's a good question. I, hierarchy of presentation, I don't know of any store, I've done about 300. I do not know of any store that puts the price above the ID.
Sure. But there is a gas station located just south of you, on the same side of the street, on Connecticut Avenue. There's also a gas station located across Connecticut Avenue, on the northeast corner from you, that both have conforming monument signs, that both put the, the brand name and the price next to each other, left and right, not top and bottom. So the argument of making the price more visible doesn't really hold water with me.
I agree. I, I stand weak before you. But we, it is very clear that this we, it is very clear that uh this particular store, uh, as compared to the other ones across the street, don't have landscaping in front. When you bring these signs all the way down to the grass level, they get damaged by the trimmings, that's necessary, the hedge grows above them, and this, this sign is not on a monument, uh, because the monument itself will make it uh higher, and um we are asking for a height, not an area, and that height does not display additional signage, it is actually void.
Well, to that point, though, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, because looking at, you know, the county guidance and our own guidance on the calculated square footage area, if this sign goes from grade to nine feet above and is six feet wide, is that not still calculated as nine by six, which is fifty-four square feet, which would also violate the code?
Correct, so we would follow the county regulations on signs which would include the posts as an integral part of the sign. Um, so the calculation would be nine by six as opposed to six by six.
Okay, so the statement that just raising a three feet, it still conforms to square footage is, is not accurate. Okay. The other thing that I'm, you know, and I read your, your statement of justification, the other thing that threw me was a, the thought that this three feet of height is needed in making the store commercially viable, but this gas station has been there for, I don't know, two decades plus, and that monument sign from the former Kensington gas had been located there for well over a decade, and it was a successful gas station, successful enough that Valero went out and leased it. I'm not sure I, I agree with you that there is a impulse activity that can't be met when somebody drives down and they need gas and they see a gas station, they'll pull in and get gas. You know, so I, I, I will step back for a moment in case anybody else has questions.
Just for the record, that gas station's been over, been there for over forty years, and it was a Getty, I think the four Kensington, yeah? What it was before that, I couldn't remember. Uh, Darren, Nate or Bridget, do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
I will just say that I, I appreciate your coming in, making a case. We don't generally grant variances, or, you know, for a reason that is retroactively justifying a mistake. You have, the, 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 the gas station has Valero, the name. Um, I, I don't know how tall those canopies are over the gas pumps, but, you know, I'll say fifteen, twenty feet up in the air.
Fifteen to sixty.
Price, as Connor points out, is at the bottom of the sign. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm likely a no on this variance request, and, and I'm very skeptical of, you know, the, the, of the basis for it.
To that, to, to, to Darren's point, and I didn't mention this, but I, I have serious reservations of especially an application package that shows conformity, that shows that you, you know, the applicant knew what the, the guidelines were. It designed a sign plan to meet those, and then installed something that violates it, but then just asked for forgiveness. Because it's not, I, I don't know that it's necessarily going to be a precedent, but it isn't the business that I would like to see the town in, this was a mistake. It's not ours to approve it because you guys chose to do something that violates. When you, you clearly demonstrated that you, you knew what it took to conform to both county and the town's regulations.
So, just real quick, I, I agree with everything that's been said, and I'm likely probab, I'm likely a no on this as well, and it's really related to those issues of process, and I think, you know, Connor, Connor just summed it up pretty well there. And just, I think blatant disregard for the application, I mean, in the application, it says that the applicant should uh provide a, a view at night, so that we can see and that the, the community is able to see what that looks like at night. I didn't see that included in the documents, I think it's just, you know, disregarding the process. So, um, you know, and, and, and for, for the record, I, I drove by it today at different times, and to be, to be honest, you know, I'm in a little car and I'm trying to look at, see if raising it actually gives me more visibility coming south or north. And, you know, I, I drove it in two different cars and it didn't, you know, one's high, a little higher than the other. Honestly, I didn't see much more visibility than the, you know, the, the, the logo that was on top of the gas pumps or, or right above it, which houses the gas pumps. But I, but I do think it, you know, I, I would encourage you to keep the, the landscaping, um, I think that is a really nice addition. Um, but, but for me, I, I, this will be a no.
Bridget, any comments?
Yeah, I gotta say, this fails every prong of the variance test. I mean, we need to go no further than that.
I, I know, I, I drove by it also today, and I, I did notice that the, the cars that are in this, in this picture, they have, uh, you know, Turner Brothers, so I'm assuming that the owner of the station is allowing them to show cars in the lot, so um, I don't know if that's legal or not legal, but uh, you know, you might wanna get rid of that pickup truck, and then it wouldn't be blocking the sign. So that would definitely be helpful, um, but um. Before I open it up, did you have anything else you wanna add?
Um, no, I'm sorry that I have to come with, with an application like this after the fact. Uh, on behalf of the owner, they have over three hundred stores in the metro area. This is one that is not their norm in terms of asking for variance after the fact, and we apologize and we respect your opinion and ruling.
Okay, um, does anyone in the audience have a comment they would like to make? Not seeing anyone. Council, do you want to make a motion regarding the variance?
Sure, I'll move to uh deny the variance for 10616 Connecticut Avenue assigned variance.
There's a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Doesn't look like you're, you didn't get to sign variants, so.
That's all right, we'll have to cut it down, we thank you, and we will, we comply.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Alright, moving on, uh, Audit Committee. Um, we are required to acknowledge the appointment of uh the Audit, Audit Committee. That would be Jeff K. Pron, Leslie Olson, and Kerry Thompson uh for a one-year term, so I will swear them in. But we should be doing the audit, what, in about a month or so? Is that about right? Two months?
Um, the audit starts in the first week in August.
Okay, but they, uh, the auditing company has it for a while before, so the committee will meet, are they gonna meet uh twice like they did before?
Um, yeah, they're meeting in another week, another pre-audit meeting, yes.
Okay, so I'll need to swear them in before then, is that correct? Okay, alright, just let me know when it's convenient.
Okay.
Okay, but, um, and compost crew, uh, is that Nate or Connor who's gonna?
Oh, tag team, Nate, you get to give the
Both.
Good news and I'll give the other news.
I'll go first, um, so we got the good news for all of you compost enthusiasts out there, that we have broached the fifty, fifty accounts mark so that we got a discount, so. Connor very helpfully gave me the numbers here, I'm just looking over my text. Um, so we have fifty to seventy-four registrations or households that are doing it now, so we broke the fifty barrier, and that's now um twenty-four dollars, or excuse me, twenty dollars a month, because it was twenty-four before. So everyone's, everyone's bill in the next cycle should be updated to, to twenty dollars, which is great. If we get it up to seventy-five or more, it'll drop another four dollars to sixteen. So, um, good news, for anyone new who signs up, you'll get that twenty-dollar rate, assuming we don't dip back below fifty. In addition to that, they've also started coming to, to the uh farmer's market on a regular basis, uh, every third Saturday, they're gonna be coming, um, I wasn't able to go, Connor, I don't know if you were at the last time that they, they joined, but um, I assume that we must have gotten some signups out of that.
We did, we did, I think we had um two on-the-spot signups, um, and a couple more that are taking the information, they're going to be coming in, moving into town, and so we're very excited. Uh, and, and, you know, conversation was that, that once they're established, that they would love to get started on composting as well.
So there's, um, there's half the update, and over to Connor.
Yeah, the other is just, um, we're still working with compost crew to locate a, a drop-off bin, an actual compost drop-off bin, somewhere at the Mark Station, and this is to help, you know, smaller households or households that believe that they, they aren't gonna generate enough compost that to pay for a bucket of their own, but they want to compost and they wanna participate, we would have a drop site within the town, and we're looking at the Mark Station, because it will also help with our farmer's market on Saturdays, those food vendors that have compostables, they can drop them right there on site. Um, and so we see this as a great way to help make sure that those uh compostables get into the compost stream, don't end up into, you know, the regular refuse stream. Um, we are, the, the actual location of this, I'm, um, Nate and I are working with Matt and, and the town crew, because we do have kind of a limited square footage of, of right-of-way that the town controls in there, and as we're gonna come upon later in the uh, the agenda, the Pepco E, uh, electric vehicle charging stations are also needing to be placed, and so we're, we're just giving preference to uh the, the EV charging stations, so once their locations are, are set and they are in, then we can identify the location for the uh compost crew site. So, just, you know, uh, stay tuned in, and as, as those updates come, Nate and I will continue to report back.
Okay, I, I have a question, because uh you all discussed this topic when I excused myself at the last meeting, so. Uh, I had originally understood that what would be at the farmer's market would be smaller containers just to handle the farmer's market composting, and we've now expanded it to anyone who isn't a compost, then, you know, wants to drop something off, so.
I mean, part of that will be the design. Well, but on the recommendation of compost crew, they gave us multiple-sized bins, and um, you know, the thought was to build a protective enclosment around it, just so animals don't tip it over and get into it, and um but, you know, they gave recommended sizes, which is akin to the recycling bin, I think it's sixty gallon, is that right, Matt? They have multiple sizes, we ultimately can determine, you know, what we want to do with it. Uh, likewise, it may be that through design of how these things get opened and closed, and um, I mean, our intent and hope is that if you had a small amount of, of compost and you wanted to drop it in there, um, maybe you're just a, a household of one or two, and you don't have enough for a, a household bin, um, you'd be able to do it, but ultimately, how we design this enclosment and operationally how they will work is to be determined.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, because I, I don't wanna be a skeptic, but I, I am a little concerned about it, and part of it is the um you know, the, the recycling containers and someone who goes around and
Contamination.
Around, and, you know, once somebody contaminates, you know, something, um, the the public's not really good sometimes at following directions of what you can put in a recycling container and what you can't. So I, I just, I have some concerns, so, you know, I hate signs, but it, you know, people don't always read the signs, but, you know, don't put this in here, because once you put this in here, now you've totally messed it up for what we're trying to do, so I, those are just concerns that I, I hope we can address.
Yeah, and compost crew gave examples of some very obvious signage uh from other places like College Park, but again, as obvious as any sign is, if you don't stop to read it, if you just think it can as it can as it can. So, uh, agreed, I mean, uh, contamination will truly spoil, you know, and, and talking to Dan Israel from compost crew, our concern is, you know, if it starts to get contamination, it may just all end up in the garbage uh stream.
Right, okay.
So.
Alright, well, let's uh, let's continue to work on this, uh, you know, the, the larger, you know, the enclosure is, the harder it is going to be to find a location at the train station, because we do not have a lot of right-of-way there. So, uh, and obviously, uh, it needs to be attractive and it needs to be secure, so um okay, um, so we have, uh, especially if we're gonna get the crew involved, we might not wanna get them too involved, depending on how quickly you wanna do this because of, you know, it is summertime, then they have this brief period before leaf season, and then they have more time after leaf season before the snow comes. So it's just a timing issue too, so I don't know how fast we wanna do this, but.
I, and I don't know how fast Pepco is gonna work, but I think.
And that's another thing too.
The dominoes really are letting, you know, citing Pepco, the EV charging stations first, so.
Okay, very good. Alright, so let's uh, uh, does anyone in the audience have a question about the compost crew um discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Um, so Council, let's just go down the line, uh, if you have anything that you would like to report, uh, Darren, let's start with you.
Uh, the only thing I, I wanna, I, I don't, you know, report, just sort of follow up on is, um, for me, there are two big uh we've got ordinance changes or, or that we wanna not lose steam on. First is revising the setback requirements in light of some changes at the county level, and, you know, to the extent that um this week's uh circular, semi-circle driveway highlights another potential issue, you know, I, I think it's something that we wanna revisit and, and decide do we wanna make changes to the ordinance. And then the second is um the, you know, how we potentially respond to the uh to the approval of acci, accessory dwelling units within the town. And so both of those, I think, require maybe some committee work, or maybe some, you know, we can handle at the county level. Um, but I, I, I do wanna keep moving on them, because I, I think, you know, we get constantly, uh, we get new permit requests for houses, and the sooner we, we figure out what do we want for side yard setbacks, um, the, the, the more guidance we can provide to developers and kind of stem what has become a liberalization at the county level.
Okay, can we add like impervious surfaces, and I'm thinking specifically about driveways? I've seen a lot of just huge concrete driveways being poured, and um, you know, that's all runoff. There's no um any sort of stormwater management on any of these giant, almost runways that, um, so. I know we have them, you know, in the front yard, they can only be so big, but uh, you know, when you're going from the street all the way into the back, somebody's backyard full length, it does um put a lot of impervious um surface there.
I, I would be supportive of that, definitely adding that is something to look into.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, and again, I've, I've said this probably repeatedly over my years here, but I, I would love to see an, an example of another municipality that has um done that. I, I'm certainly supportive of it, uh, either as a stick where there would be an ordinance requiring it, or a carrot where perhaps we waive some fees if, if um the proposal involves impervious, or pervious sur, or permeable surfaces.
What's it, there's a house on, um, I think it's Baltimore, um, I think it's yellow now, but they, I, and I don't remember why, but they, they were required to put a driveway with like tire pads, and then grass strip in the center.
Well, the Donatelli's house has a very nice driveway that is, you know, semi-permeable, it's got.
Called ribbon driveways.
Ribbon driveways, yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, that seems like a good solution, rather than just making something, you know, completely concrete all the way through, especially if it's, you know, depending on how it's um the topography, you know, all that water could be running into your neighbor's backyard from, you know, if it slopes to a certain point, so, okay, I, it's just.
But I, I don't wanna, you know, we can't write it tonight, but I'm certainly side yard, and, and I'm happy to add driveway to it. I just think we've, we've gotta keep moving forward on that, or, you know, we'll we'll be next.
They're also historically accurate for most of the houses around.
Maybe that's why they did it?
Yeah.
To do it?
They're cute, they're cheaper, they're better for the environment.
Yeah, I, I just remembered that they, they, that was, uh, they had to do it, I just didn't remember whether it was for historic reasons, so.
What kind of driveway do you have, Bridget?
I don't have any.
I know, I'm sorry.
I think Nate, yours is just gravel, isn't it? Kind of a.
Yeah, it's gravel, um, yeah, we're actually looking at getting it uh updated with more gravel or something permeable, so.
Connor's is dirt.
Connor's is dirt. Okay, well, we've had everybody's driveway now, so.
There you go.
Anyway, in the historic district at least, so. Okay.
Alright, anyway, that's what I'll be working on.
Okay, great, uh, Nate? Okay, great, uh, Nate, I'm just going down my line here.
No, what, so while we're on the issue of, um, things to not lose momentum on, maybe, and I don't think this was in the organizational meeting, um, agenda, which, by the way, Tracy, I think the agenda looked good. The only thing I would add maybe is this, um, is the issue on sending the survey out for the the election, uh, the voting.
Oh, good.
Eligibility, those two questions, I think that we don't want to lose that, lose sight of that.
Good.
Um, but the only update I had was just tomorrow night, just to make a public service announcement that the Kensington Parkway Shoulder Improvements Public Workshop Number Two is happening. So, um, Montgomery County Department of Transportation, as many of you know, is studying, um, solutions to add um, a shared bike and walking pathway along Kensington Parkway, um, between Saul and Everett, I believe. So it's a short, short section of 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 the the not, the the section that's not within the town boundaries. But we intend as a town to connect to it in whichever way they design it. And there's two that they've narrowed it down to which balance pretty well, I think. The residents' concerns that are there across from, um, where the path would be along the parkway. Uh, concerns around them wanting to maintain parking in that section of the gravel that's there already. And just the the interest in having bike and, you know, a safe and and walkable area for pedestrians and cyclists. So the two solutions, just to boil it down, are, you know, they're they're, they all kind of intermittently go between, um, the pathway and the parking area. I mean, there'll be a continuous pathway throughout that section, but some places it narrows to accommodate the parking. And the only difference between the two options is, um, the length of the pathways and how sporadic the parking spaces come. So is it a longer section of parking with, um, longer section of pathway? Or is it kind of short, short sections of each kind of weaving in and out? So you can see that tomorrow if you if you tune in and it's available, um, to register on the town calendar. So I just encourage everyone interested in these issues to, um, to join.
Good, thank you. Uh, Connor?
I have, uh, nothing for this month, I think, other than love the Fourth of July Bike Parade.
Okay, well, we can, we can, we can talk about that together. We, uh, had a great time. Um, so, yeah, we had a great time at the Fourth of July Bike Parade. It was very well attended considering, uh, it was our first year back after a a year off. And, um, so lots of people to to thank. And Connor, you can, if I've missed anybody, please let me know. Uh, we had Mark Hudson, who, uh, was our coordinator. Um, Val Deal was our DJ. Uh, Lindsay Cantor, uh, from Temple Emmanuel saying, uh, loaned us her beautiful voice for, um, our National Anthem. And then we had some volunteers, Anna Sax, Dave Bodett, John Gerson and Joe Ralston. And of course, uh, the Smith family, Jenny and Doug, for allowing us to use their front yard, uh, for the DJ. Uh, the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department for bringing every apparatus that they own to the parade, which was great. And then, of course, uh, Matt, our town manager, who helped put this together. And then Joe Natali, who is on our Public Works Crew, who worked on Sunday to, uh, to help with all the, uh, the barricades for the streets. So, um, did I forget anybody?
Uh, one more, uh, Kavira Archuleta.
Oh, that's right, yes, thank you.
So and and it is a big thanks to all those folks because without them, we truly would not have had a parade. And they, you know, we put out a couple of requests, uh, the mayor put it out on the list serve. And we had a bunch of people jump forward and say, how can we help? We want to make sure this happens. And in about twenty minutes, it all came together.
Yeah, it was great and it was, um, the weather was perfect. I I have never, uh, had a Fourth of July that was, I wasn't, uh, just sweating everywhere. I mean, it really was beautiful and people spent a lot of time in the park afterwards, which was great. So and enjoyed the ice cream, so I'm so glad that we we did have the, so. Anyway, um, sorry, Bridgette, we went into Fourth of July. Anything you'd like to report on?
Yeah, so, um, the Pepco rate case, uh, is over, Pepco lost. Um, there was, you know, for what is typically a really boring commission process. There was a lot of testimony, not the least of which was Matt's. Matt had some great testimony, it was very powerful. It got cited over and over in the decision by the PSC. Um, so, thank you, Matt. Uh, basically came down to us paying for stuff we were never going to use and the PSC saw that. Um, so your rates so far are not going to go up, which is good.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Can I just ask, Bridgette?
Yeah.
You can ask.
Need to refile. They need to refile because they they need to have a rate case approved for the next three years.
Yeah.
Um, if 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 all we were looking for in this rate case was, you know, an agreement where we would not go first, I guess, with the conversions.
I think that might be a little simplified, but y- yeah, that's how we spun it. I mean, we were trying to use that delay to get some other things that we wanted, but yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, and I I don't know what else we want other than that. I mean, I guess we wanted some EV stations, which it seems like we're getting.
Although that's separate from the rate case, that's a different.
Okay, well, I don't know what what else we wanted besides not go first, but it it whatever we want, given that they've just been turned down and now need to refile, um, is 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 now or soon the time to go forward and and say, hey, we won't intervene in the next rate case if you give us X, Y, and Z?
I I mean, we could, it, this is sort of, I I've participated in rate cases, but in a very peripheral nature before this. Um, I think, you know, usually when I've been in a rate case, it's been just, you know, the relevant actors participating by submitting comments. And, you know, for the most part, they get heard. Um, this was kind of an exceptionally odd situation, at least to me, um, where it was just like, no, 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 it's going to be great. Shh, be quiet, you know, like, there was no sort of acknowledgement of our of our position or of the other municipalities' positions. It was very sort of Orwellian response that we were getting. Um, I don't know that we would have to, like, file, you know, i- in the true litigation sense. I think we could probably just submit comments when the next rate case comes along. Um, it all depends on how potentially disastrous it is and how much energy and money we want to put into it.
But but at this point, we don't have an agreement from them that we would not go first on an LED conversion.
No, but we don't, there isn't necessarily the assumption that we would go first, right? Like, there's, there's no.
I just don't know what else we want from them in the context of the rate case because.
Sure, yeah.
Did the rake, the.
So they have to submit the tariff first and that's going to sort of shape the direction of the conversation. So what they decide they want to do within that rate case. So we're going to charge, you know, X amount of money, state, come and look at this, make sure that this is all kosher. And with this extra money, this is what we're going to do. We don't know what they're going to plan next. They might have been a little bit ambitious the last time. So it sort of depends on what they ask for from the state before we can sort of say, you know, or give our response. I mean, what you were saying before makes sense. We could say like, you know, ahead of this, here's what we really didn't like and here's what we would be willing to negotiate with. But, um, I I've never done it. I don't even know if it's a procedure.
My my impression of the first rate case that they filed was they were going to keep our rates flat for two years and then have an increase of the third year. And, um, I'm hoping that their new revised rate case doesn't involve an increase in years one and two. But, um, you know, I I guess I, you know, having my rates stay flat, um, compared to what some people who signed up for, you know, solar, for example, are facing from their twenty year leases. I'm I'm kind of happy to have my rates stay flat.
The premium product, Darren, people are paying for more than just the energy.
I know, I know, I know, we'll deal with that next month. Um, so anyway, they just a thought that, you know, to just to sort of, you know, bring this to an end. We might consider coming at them when we're in a a better bargaining position right now.
Yeah, I mean, it's just an unorthodox approach and I don't think it's bad, I'm totally for it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, well, just, um, I'll mention just a couple of other little things. Um, I want to thank KHS for being able to bring back the Saturday concerts. I know we've, uh, they've got two now under their belt and they're continuing on, uh, I believe, uh, Leslie Olson and Gillette, um, Alcar is, uh, putting them on. So they they've stepped up to the plate, uh, and Mike Landis, I believe, is also on that list. Is that correct, Jack, the three?
Yes, it it it's basically, uh, to Alcar and and Mike Landis.
Okay.
The ones who organize it.
Very good.
And and we are looking for additional volunteers to to help.
I'm sure, okay, well, we'll put out the.
Please let us know if you're interested.
Okay, great, to 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 play or to just to help organize?
To help organize it.
Okay.
We actually have more people who want to play than than we have.
That's great.
Times available.
Okay, good. All right, well, I I appreciate KHS, uh, being able to bring back that great event. I know, uh, it was, it was missed, so it's it's nice to have that back. Um, and we've had some nice days for it too. Um, I also, uh, we have set up a Main Street, uh, presentation. This is something our state delegate Jared Solomon had asked us to, uh, to look at. Uh, we're not doing it at a town meeting. Uh, Matt, is that next Tuesday, a week from Tuesday, is that correct?
It's, uh, July twenty seventh. Um, it's with, um, for the Maryland Main Street Program. So if any of the council members would like to join us, just let us know. It's, um, the twenty seventh at ten AM.
And we can have up to two council members, uh, attend if you're interested in the Main Street Program. Uh, Matt and I are are going to be attending. So if you're, if that time works for you, please let Matt know and.
Matt, I'd like to go if it's possible. Um, I talked to Jared about that a little bit, um, in the past, and I think it relates to some of the work we're doing with the working group.
Okay.
Possible.
Anybody else? Connor?
Yeah, I would love to, but if others want to as well, we'll figure out a system. But yes, I would be very interested.
All right, so, uh, please make sure, uh, an invite gets to Nate and Connor as well. Good, thank you. Uh, and then we'll, uh, report back at the August meeting if there's something that, uh, we want to, um, do with the the Main Street Program. Um, and, uh, also, we are doing a journal that'll be coming out in August. Um, council members, if you have anything that you want to cover, uh, in the journal regarding any of your committees, the deadline would be August thirteenth. Um, let Kieran know if you're going to be putting anything in the journal and so she can, uh, make sure there's space. Okay. Um, I did attend the MML meeting, uh, last month and, uh, it was great being back in Ocean City. And, uh, even though it was hot, they had a nice breeze and, uh, it was a a meeting that was set up for COVID. We were not really in COVID when we, uh, met. And, uh, so it was a little bit disjointed, less people. Um, but, uh, still had a, had a nice, uh, a nice conference. So it was good to get back, um, to Ocean City for that event, so, um, that was nice. Okay, so that's it for me. Uh, oh, um, I do want to bring up, um, the Modena is, uh, having a job fair, uh, in August. Um, it's August third and seventeenth, uh, from eleven to five. And the job fair is being held in the social hall at St. Paul's, across the street from, uh, Town Hall. So I know, uh, some of our residents have been very interested in participating in the job fair. So, um, if you know of anyone, uh, who's, um, in, uh, looking for for work, um, it's quite convenient to have a job right here in the town. So, um, uh, and, excuse me, and the job fair is also walkable. So, um, anyway, so that just pass that on as well. Okay, so let's go on down to, uh, the town manager and staff. Matt?
Sure, just note the, uh, Modena Job Fair information's on the town calendar. Uh, if you need any more information, um, it's posted to the calendar. And I'd also like to formally, um, uh, introduce everyone to Alex Marini. Uh, she's our new assistant to the town manager. Uh, she is now on week three with us, um, and the town staff. So, uh, we are happy to have her on board and, uh, if you get a chance, send her an email or say hi. And, um, I don't know if Alex wants to say hi to everyone or not, so.
Yeah, I'll say hi real quick. I just want to say I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Well, Alex loves my dog, so I know she's not going anywhere, so. And and Abby likes her as well, so we're happy to have Alex on board, so. And it's nice to see, um, she and Annie have been getting out of the office and, uh, doing some cruising around. So she's getting to know the town as well, so.
So just a quick update, um, as Mayor Furman noted earlier, we are not having the actual parade for the Labor Day Parade, but, uh, we are holding a festival, um, along with Paint the Town. Um, Alex and I will be meeting with our coordinators next week, uh, Lisa and Victoria. Um, we are planning about thirty-five booths along, uh, Armory Avenue, uh, food vendors, uh, along Mitchell and some beer and wine vendors at Town Hall. Uh, we are also working to have, um, the Bounce House and some other toys over at Reinhardt Park. Um, and two live bands. Um, and then we changed the festival hours, um, to eleven to three PM, um, to better work with, uh, the beer and wine vendors who requested not to start at ten AM. But, uh, right, I mean, we're getting a little bit of feedback, not as much as we thought at first, but, um, you know, we'll, we'll see where we can get with the, uh, with the vendors, so.
Okay, council, you have any questions? Okay, uh, does anyone in the audience have a question regarding Labor Day? I want to say hello to Alex.
I'll say hello to Alex. Alex, welcome aboard. Uh, I know we've had a chance to talk, uh, very excited to have you, not as much as Matt is, though. So, uh, I just, if you, if, if there's anything I think us on the council can do, just ask.
Will do, thank you, hopefully I can be of service.
Good, uh, Joe, did you want to make a comment?
Thanks, Mayor Furman, yeah, I think the, um, Labor Day plans as just outlined by the town manager sound very good. And, uh, really glad that they're going to be in the heart of town, um, this year. And and, uh, so it sounds like a great, uh, reentry back to these, uh, to this, uh, annual event in Kensington. And also welcome to Alex, uh, my wife and I had a chance to to chat with her briefly and introduce our little dog Gemma to to Alex during a visit that she and Matt paid, uh, to Frederick Place not too long ago.
Meeting all the dogs, it's great.
And we have plenty of them.
Love it.
So, thank you, and they're not as cute as, Gemma's pretty cute too. She's a very, she's an adorable little dog. Okay, so, uh, we'll move on to, uh, public appearances, um. I don't think anybody else was, had anything else. So if, uh, you want to bring something up that's, uh, not on the agenda, and I see Jack's got his hand up, uh, both, uh, with a icon and a hand. Go ahead, Jack.
Thank you. Something completely different, I have two astronomical announcements. On Friday, uh, July twenty-three will be the full moon. And the next week on the the night of of Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, and the morning of Thursday, the twenty-ninth, will be the peak of the Delta Aquarius meteor shower. They are predicting about twenty meteors per hour. Unfortunately, the nearly full moon rises before midnight, which interferes with viewing. And the best viewing of the bright meteors will be in the hours just before dawn.
Jack, I think at a meeting, the last meeting or a meeting, uh, two ago, you brought up, I think it was a a red moon, a giant red moon, is that correct? You remember that? Or was it a?
No, it was, it was the super moon.
Super moon, because my, my son lives in Okinawa and he, there was a picture of that his wife posted.
Oh, yeah.
But and behind there was the big moon and it was, um, it was really cool, so.
It gets red sort of copper color, that's the, that that's the same red light that you see at sunset.
Uh huh.
But focused all the way around, so you get the whole thing.
So you had to be in Okinawa to really get the experience, but it was, it was really.
I've seen it here, perhaps more copper color, like a shiny new penny than than really red. But, but that's a different phenomenon than the super moon.
Yeah, those are cool.
The, the moon's orbit is an ellipse, not a circle. And you get the super moon when you get the full moon at the time when the moon is closest to the earth. So it's about seven percent closer and about fourteen percent brighter.
Wow, that was really nice.
Yep.
I heard that Richard Branson is going to the super moon next.
That was going to be my question, though, since we have a resident expert. Jack, did Richard Branson go into space? Yes or no?
Oh, boy.
The, the answer depends on which definition you use.
Yeah, that's what I was re, I don't know anything about this, but I guess the US defines it as, or one body is fifty miles and one body defines it as sixty-two miles or greater.
The, yeah, and tho- those are sort of arbitrary. The the sixty-two miles is corresponds to a hundred kilometers. There is a thing they call the Von Karman line, named for the uh, aerodynamic stability of Von Karman. And that is the the highest point at which you can fly an airplane.
Well.
And and that is about eighty, eighty-two, eighty-three kilometers.
I'm going to go by the only source that matters to me. Jack, did Richard Branson get into space this weekend? All right.
By NASA, by NASA's definition, he did.
I'll ask you off the record.
By NASA, okay.
All right, well, Jeff Bezos sent him congratulations, so.
He points out that that the the Bezos wasn't first, but he will go higher.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Jack. Uh, so anyone else have something for public appearances? Uh, Joe?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Furman. Uh, just a couple of real quick points. Uh, the uh, survey that that council member Engel had mentioned uh, a few minutes ago. I really hope it's designed in a way that we get a really great response rate. Uh, and I mention that because response rates to polling of all kinds is really, has really tanked. And uh, that really has offers problems in terms of getting representative samples. So I really hope that there's some considerable thought, as I'm sure there will be, given to how we can um, uh, increase the response rate to the to this planned survey. And my other point, Mayor Furman, was just to reiterate a comment I made last month at the uh, uh, council meeting in terms of uh, encouraging the town to think about developing an inventory of town trees, of town trees or pro- top trees that are on town property in order to identify potentially hazardous, potentially dangerous uh, trees that that have the potential to uh, you know, to fall on residential housing. And and we saw a example of that earlier uh, in the uh, in the summer. So this is a suggestion that that uh, you know, is offered in good faith, and I and I really do hope that the town will uh, seriously consider it. And I'm happy to try to work with the uh, town staff to to begin a pilot study if if they would like to to undertake that. But I really do think this could be very important to us to have a uh, a running list of trees that that look like they might be in need of some attention or assistance or even removal, because the town trees are getting really old on the order of, in some places, of sixty years or 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 longer. And uh, for some, for some species, that reaches a uh, you know, a limit.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Furman.
Okay.
So I think if you have um, if you if you have any time to give, I'm sure Matt uh, would appreciate your support for the the survey methodology you might recommend for for the voting questions.
That's a fair point. I was kind of thinking you might mention that. Um, I know how.
I'm sure you have some experience in in that, right?
I I know better how polls fail than how they succeed. So that sounds uh.
Well, well, maybe we can check it just to make sure it's not going to fail. It's, we'll run it by you.
Thank you. Uh, Jack, you had another something else?
Regarding the trees, I'd just like to to point out that uh, the Pepco's contractor comes around supposedly once a year to look at to look at trees and oh, branches that overhang the power lines and they cut and they cut back the the ones that they think are hazardous.
Yeah, they definitely, uh, the street trees uh, are maintained. And I I understand what uh, Joe is talking about, which are trees that are not on the main streets, but are more on just um, property that's not as visible as a street tree. So.
Yeah, and 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 last month, a a big branch from a from a tree that was two houses north of me fell, fell and took down the power lines.
Right, right. And that I, that was not a, that was on private property. I don't think it was even um, not sure Pepco would have gotten to that one. Maybe they would.
Well, no, for that tree, they could, they cut up, they they trimmed the branches from that tree that overhang their wires.
Okay, and then are you talking about before it fell, a branch fell or after?
Um, the 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 thing, uh, the branch fell last month. I don't know exactly, I don't know when when exactly the, the company is absolutely.
Had it been trimmed before previously?
Yeah, other other years.
Okay.
And and one block south of me, a branch fell uh, on a town tree in front of Bill McCurious's house. And it fell exactly parallel to the street and missed the power lines, which was just amazing.
Okay, well, sometimes we get lucky.
Um, yeah, sometimes you win.
Sometimes we win. Okay, any, anything else? Will we move on? Not seeing any hands, not seeing anything in the chat, so we will move on to ordinance resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Sure. Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, before you is resolution number R dash twelve dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of Kensington approving a variance to encroach three feet into the ten-foot side yard setback for dwelling on, for dwelling on a land zone for single family use at ten two-two-one Montgomery Avenue. Uh, the council uh, previously uh, approved the count, um, the various requests at our June meeting, and this is the formal resolution for adoption.
Council, you have any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve resolution R dash twelve dash twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you very much. Matt?
Uh, resolution number R dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-one is a resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of Kensington authorizing a license agreement with Pepco Holdings for electric vehicle charging stations at the Kensington Town Hall and the Kensington uh, Mark Train Station. Uh, within the license agreement, uh, in the public documents and the council packet, um, Town Attorney Ferguson uh, made some um, recommendations, including some insurance language. Um, so if adopted this evening, we'll pass this along to Pepco um, to see if they have any uh, feedback from uh, Town Attorney Ferguson, and we will allow her to work with them and Pepco's staff attorneys.
Did you have any questions about the redlining that Sue Ellen did in the contract? No? Okay.
Matt, I'm I'm sorry, just process wise, are we, if we approve the resolution, are we, you know, is that the last that we would see of it? And then we sort of delegated to Sue Ellen to negotiate or?
Yes, uh, we are in substantially the form attached, and then Sue Ellen would work with Pepco's attorneys um, with any any uh, feedback that they have on her recommendations. We could bring it back to the council if you'd request, though.
Okay, I mean, I look, I don't I don't know that we need to. I just was trying to figure out what we um, what we're doing. The 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 only question, and maybe, i- is this the time, Tracy?
Yeah, it's the time.
So I I, i- in looking through it, we give Pepco the right to um, place signs restricting the parking spaces adjacent to the charging station. And it says um, in accordance with the approved plans and required permits. And I didn't see anything about what the parking restrictions would be for these eight spots. And I think it could be a very different experience if we give all-day parking allowances at them versus four hours. And I just didn't know what discussions there might have been about that.
So I think you brought that up in the last meeting, um, because I listened to the recording of the part that I missed. And I think that was discussed regarding, you know, whether somebody just parks there in the morning, plugs in their car and then just comes back around five o'clock in the afternoon, you know, so. Do we have control over that on how long you can park?
Yeah, and Matt, to to add to, because Darren asked this last week or last month as well, and it's in our building here. The the question was, do you charge, does Pepco charge for simply parking, occupying the spot if you're not even charging? So in our building here, they don't, but that's because of supply and demand. There's just not enough people using it. But the idea is, we charge you a a a rate for the electricity that you're consuming up until if your car stops consuming it, but you're still in the spot, they would charge you just to park. Do we have any control over that? As, I mean, the other thing I'd hate to see is, oh, hey, I don't need to use this. You know, I I I own a non-electric vehicle, but I just realized it's a loophole that I can just park here because it's all-day parking. And there's no enforcement of the fact that my vehicle is either not charging or isn't even, for instance, an electric vehicle. I'll tell you, the people who park in my building in the electric charging stations are predominantly not electric vehicles. They are just spots closer to the door.
I think when we talked to Barbara, they were charging for the electricity.
Right, and she said not for occupancy.
Yeah, and it would be up to us to enforce it, just like any of our.
Yeah, I I don't think it's that complicated.
Yeah, we could have our parking enforce it, right? Or or are you guys asking if we would be negated from being able to enforce it because it's?
That's my question. We, when I look at the um, page two of the agreement, uh, we give Pepco the right to erect signage restricting the use of those spaces. And so if they say um, electric vehicle parking only, for example, then somebody can park their um, Tesla in the morning, take the train downtown.
Or their Volt.
It, or their Volt, thank you. Uh, uh, it could be fully charged when they park it there. It just happens to be the last spot in the parking lot, and they don't need a charge, but they hook it up. They they go downtown. A- and the the spot doesn't get the turnover that we want. So I I just, I I felt like the the use of those spaces would be heightened if um, there was a three or four-hour parking limit on on the spaces that that we could then enforce versus simple electric car parking only, which which would possibly serve only one car that day. So I'm just asking, I guess, what?
I don't see, I don't think Pepco would fight you on that, right? Because they want to charge people for the electricity. Like, they would want a new car to come in that they could.
Right, a- and so the, so the license agreement, page two says, that they can restrict parking in accordance with the approved plan and required permit. And I didn't see any of that in the materials. And it, and we don't, we may not need to resolve it tonight.
Yeah.
If this isn't the last time we look at it, or if we are, you know, kind of deputizing Sue Ellen to handle it for us. I would just like to see that that Pepco and we encourage turnover of those spots, so that they're actually being used to charge vehicles.
That makes sense. Uh, can we just schedule something with Sue Ellen?
Yeah, can we, can we approve it and then just ask for um, for like a work session with Sue Ellen or Sue, whatever, for Sue Ellen to work through with Pepco and identify what the signage would be, so we can agree on that separately?
Because I don't see us being diametrically opposite, you know, to Pepco in any way on that. But both of our interests are aligned there.
I'm happy to do that. Is I, is, and that's why I asked Matt whether this was the last time the town was having involvement in it.
Ever again.
I I'm sure this issue has come up in other cases, so it's nothing new, but I do see Darren's point. So I guess I'm hearing we want to go ahead and pass the resolution, but we want to make sure uh, maybe conferring with Sue Ellen. Two of the council members could, you know, get on a call with her, with Matt, to make sure that issue has been resolved or that it's a concern to us and we want it in the contract. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
Okay, so uh, Matt, work with Darren and then one of either Bridget or Nate, depending on how they want to do this, we only have council members at a time. So. And uh, do a a call with Sue Ellen to pass that on. Okay, does that solve that?
So should, well, should we go ahead and approve resolution and then, you know?
Well, the resolution is allowing them, her to proceed into this uh, contract. Is that not the case?
Yeah, but that would let her, it would authorize her to to negotiate it as well, right?
Indeed, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it says um, you would approve it by the Mayor and Council of Kensington that a license agreement is substantially the form attached, be and is hereby approved. So Sue Ellen would be able to work on our behalf on any continued issues.
But I think if this is a sticking point, we can go ahead and approve the resolution and then this week, work with Sue Ellen, because she's not going to not know if we're jumping on something quite so fast. So uh, I think we have some time here to to go back to her and want to make sure that this is covered.
Yeah.
All good? Does anyone have uh, in the audience have a question regarding this resolution? Hmm, seeing any hands or anything in the chat? Uh, so is there a motion?
Do we have to have the caveat at the end, or do we just move to approve it?
Just move to approve.
Okay, I'll move to approve resolution R dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, before we adjourn, I just want to remind everyone that we do have a work session uh, that will be in person a week from today, July nineteenth at five PM. Um, the council will meet. Uh, work sessions are open to the public, but the public is not um, there will be a printed agenda that will be sent out uh, later uh, before, um, probably by the Friday before um, the meeting. And um, so uh, the council will be having a meal, but so if you come at five, bring your own sandwich. Um, so uh, I don't know how much extra food there will be. So if you get hungry, should bring, bring a snack. So um, and also, our August ninth meeting, uh, we are going to, uh, right now, that is scheduled to be in person here at Town Hall. And um, the municipal cable station is helping us with how we can make sure everyone who wants to participate online uh, or to watch online can participate within the meeting. So hopefully we'll have that moved out and can explain that to everyone. Um, we are going to go back to uh, virtual for a while, because uh, Council Member Hills Ayed is uh, expecting her baby at the end of September, and it will make it easier for her to attend meetings uh, if she can via uh, on uh, as in virtual. So um, although she might not make the uh, October meeting, depending on how she's feeling, so.
Does make it a lot harder.
You might not want me to.
If she hasn't had much sleep, yeah, we might not want to have her.
But it will make it a lot harder for some of us to dote on said baby.
This is true. This is.
Hopefully it's a sleeper.
Anyway, all right, is there a, is, I'm sorry, Connor, do you have something else? No, you're good. Okay.
Sorry to comment, sorry to comment.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Don't all speak up at once.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Thank you, mate. All those in favor? All right, thank you very much. And uh, we will see everyone next Monday in person for the first time the council ever met in, this particular council met in person. So looking forward to that. Welcome, Alex. Thank you again.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.